Good afternoon, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. It is 2:04 PM. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, to my left Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Claus. Calling this meeting to order, and first up, we need to approve the... Actually, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll take up the agenda.
...guys and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
To proceed with the land acknowledgement?
We'd like also to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawson Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers and heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing.
Next up is approval of the agenda. We've had several corrected items or amendments, so we will need a motion. They're noted here in yellow in the upper right corner. We will need a motion to amend the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to amend the agenda for October 15th, 2024, removing item 3A from the agenda, which is interlocal agreement with Department of Enterprise Services for the Schutze estuary project so that further legal review can be done, along with moving items 4A, 4B, 5A, 5D, and 5C to consent as items 3, H, I, J, K, and L.
Motion, the second has been made to make a series of amendments to this morning's draft agenda. Discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I would like... I would like to provide some discussion items. I am not in support of removing item 3A, which is the interlocal agreement with Department of Enterprise Services. This has been something that's been worked on. I had a conversation specifically on the why this delay affects it. And based on the timeline that's been given by Department of Enterprise Services multiple times over the years on this deadlines that they had to adhere to in order to submit the budget request to the Governor's Office. And they have a meeting this Thursday, and they're going to be letting them know that we have not approved this yet. But just based on that information, I believe that the Board really needs to be forward with this request.
Other discussion? I will just add that this will be... My anticipation is that this will be on the October 29th agenda. I probably will not support pushing it past that date. There is a little bit more detail that most of the Board wanted to see regarding our financing options for the financial pieces of the ILA and a couple other nuances that I think can be easily addressed by that meeting on the 29th. So I will hopefully be in support of having that decided at the 29th, and there'll be a follow-up between now and then. Commissioner Edwards?
Yes, sir. I guess I really had not intended on commenting on this, but I feel, being as I've been here the longest, I must make a comment as to the history of mistakes that Thurston County has made off over the years. And there have been many, to the tune of millions of dollars being wasted, of the taxpayers' money being paid out in litigation. And every one of those issues were rushed. All of them were rushed. And the end result was a finding either by the State Auditor's Office or by the Washington State Supreme Court. I might mention that the most flagrant one was called the Maytown decision, cost the taxpayers $16 million in the end. And the Washington State Supreme Court ruled 9-0 against Thurston County. Not, you know, 8-1, 7-2, 6-3, 5-4, 9-0. And I like to point that out when we get in a hurry. Because if we get in a hurry, we make mistakes. So I'm just gonna let that be out there. Thank you, sir.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries and the agenda is amended. Now, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda for October 15th, 2024.
Second? Motion been made and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
That motion carries and the agenda is approved as amended. That brings us to next item, which is a proclamation for flood awareness week. Kyle Boustead. From Emergency Management, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kyle Boustead, Emergency Management Manager. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I've got my notes to make sure I stay on target. Thank you for taking the time today to highlight the importance of personal preparedness for the residents of Thurston County through this flood awareness proclamation. Emergency Management appreciates your commitment to ensuring our communities remain resilient in the face of natural disasters. Thurston County has a history of natural disasters, including flooding. We have a 19 federal disaster declaration since 1962. The good news is that over the years, we've made significant strides in public education and mitigation efforts. One of these education efforts includes our annual flood bulletin, which will be mailed out this week to those in flood-prone areas. People can also find it on our website. Not right now, but this week. You'll find it on our website, Thurston County Emergency Management. This year, we're also proud to further engage the community through our River Spotter program. This is a program where residents that live along rivers or sea rivers, or that are traveling along the river can take pictures of... real-time pictures and send it to Emergency Management so that we have real-time awareness and that we can help with flood mitigation and flood response efforts. The proclamation also is a reminder for residents of the critical importance of the risks and the potential hazards that we face in Thurston County, more than just flood awareness. It's a reminder of personal preparedness and steps to protect their property and their lives. The actions include knowing your hazards, the importance of signing up for TC Alert, which is our disaster and mass notification system here in Thurston County, getting a NOAA weather radio, making and communicating your family emergency plan, and building an emergency preparedness kit. These steps can make a life-saving difference during a disaster. By promoting readiness, we can significantly reduce the potential for loss of life and property damage. I'd also like to acknowledge our key partners, Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, and CPED for their collaboration in hazard mitigation, flood, and inclement weather response. And their partnership remains invaluable to our preparedness. If anyone would like more information or request a personal preparedness presentation, you can always find us on the Thurston County Emergency Management website or social media. So, thank you Commissioners for continuing to champion our cause, and we appreciate the proclamation.
Some questions for Kyle? Commissioner Mejia?
I don't have a question, but I kinda wanna put Kyle at the spot and congratulate him because I did hear that he is now the new Chair of the Washington State Emergency Management Association. And so that is a very distinct honor that have all of our partners across the state participating. And so Kyle, congratulations on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, yeah, thanks for highlighting that, Commissioner Mejia. I did not know that. And I... It just, as I've learned more about this job, it's those types of opportunities when we have people from our county embedded in these statewide... The information that we get back and you can bring to us and the ability to communicate what we're doing and assist with other... I think it's super, super valuable. So the fact that you're able to have that role and willing to serve, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I think the citizens are well-served by that.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for proclamation, Mr. Vice Chair?
This is a Thurston County proclamation for Thurston County Flood Awareness Week. Whereas Thurston County has experienced disasters in the past and scientific evidence indicates the county remains vulnerable to natural and human-caused disasters in the future, and whereas loss of life and property damage can significantly be significantly reduced if residents are prepared for disasters, including readiness to be self-sufficient for a minimum of two weeks and take appropriate measures before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas floods are the most prevalent natural hazard in Thurston County with 19 federal disaster declarations since 1962 related wholly or in part to flooding, and whereas the residents of our county should be educated and prepared for flood safety, property protection measures, and county agencies, along with employees, should be prepared to provide essential public services after disasters and be prepared to support the county response and recovery mission. And whereas Thurston County promotes that residents obtain disaster-related information through the county's alert notification system, fact sheets, training, the annual Thurston County flood bulletin, the county website and social media sites, and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association, NOAA, weather radio, which includes emergency alert system broadcasts, and whereas Thurston County's top rated flood plain management programs and hazard mitigation strategies have helped reduce flood damage and encourage property owners and residents in flood hazard areas to obtain reduced flood insurance to be better prepared financially in case of flooding. Now therefore be it resolved, the Thurston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the week of October 14th through October 18th, 2024, as flood awareness week in Thurston County, and urges all residents to prepare for the impacts of natural and human-caused disasters in their homes, businesses, and schools, adopted this 15th day of October, 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, next up is opportunity for the public to address the Board. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public at our meetings. However, there are guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate and do not take advantage of the fact that most meetings are televised. When called, please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address the Board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Speakers limited to a total of four minutes to address the Board. Meetings attendees may not donate any of that speaking time to another speaker. The Board does not directly respond to public comment, but on an as-needed basis, the county manager will follow up with specific items. The Board reserves the right to restrict a person's opportunity for good cause. No comments that are allude offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind, comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, or remarks about pending land use permits, or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board on appeal. Finally, all materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 of RCW. I will... No electioneering in this season. That's worth repeating. So I will go with the folks in the room, and then we'll go to Zoom. So hang tight. If you're on Zoom, you will be called upon. First up is Barry Halverson. Lisa sits on deck.
Chair, Commissioners, my name is Barry Halverson. I am an unincorporated Thurston County taxpayer from the Elm zip code. I want to talk to you today about the Deschutes River Estuary Interlocal Agreement that you are preparing to vote on. The third time I have spoke to you all as a Board about this. This ILA and associated costs has been openly... Not been openly discussed with county taxpayers. Most know nothing about what you are committing $7.5 million plus to of their tax money to. Here is Exhibit 1, showing the proposed dredge sites in West Bay applicable to this ILA. All this information was provided to you yesterday. This ILA commits $7.5 million as the county's share of funding to dredge Port of Olympia vessel berths, shown here in the pink striped area. That's this area right here. The pink striped area, not the pink area. The pink area, the bigger pink area, is done by ACE or the Army Corps of Engineers. The access area is for private marinas and the yacht club, shown here in brown. That's this area here in front of the blue. That's the access area from the marinas and the yacht club out to the deeper water. You are the elected representatives of Thurston County. Your salaries and charter is to represent the interests of unincorporated Thurston County taxpayers. This ILA is not in their best interest, and if the taxpayers knew more about it, they would almost unanimously be against it. Thurston County is partially funding this. This is essentially a gifting of unincorporated Thurston County taxpayer dollars to private marinas and yacht clubs and paying for a portion of dredging of the Port of Olympia. All but one of these existed prior to the dam being done. As an example, Thistlehead Marina was put in in 1911, Martin Marina in 1970, Olympia Yacht Club in 1930, Percival Landing, which is owned by the City of Olympia in the 1860s. So they were all done before the dam except the one, and yet they managed to get their areas dredged and everything was just fine. We already pay for the Port of Olympia to dredge their vessel berths. You're asking us to pay more from a separate taxing entity, Thurston County, Olympia, Tom Water, et cetera, to supplement the Port of Olympia tax dollars. All dredging and all other ports of the United States are paid for by their respective port authorities, not other local jurisdictions. This is a fact. You know I have done the research. Have you? Anyway, excuse me, and why should county taxpayers pay to dredge access areas to private marinas and yacht clubs, arguably the richest people amongst us? This is wrong, and I think you know it. Show some leadership and duty to the taxpayers that elected you and vote no on this ILA and send it back to the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services. The state should be paying for this. They created the problem 75 years ago and did nothing to fix the problem in Capitol Lake, although they knew about it back in the 1990s. And they should have known about it. This is a man-made disaster by the Capitol Campus DES, a preventable one. The state owns this problem and are trying to get you and the other local jurisdictions to pay for it. If you are set on passing this ILA, there is one question you need to answer before you vote on it. Where is the money coming from? This morning, you decided to remove this agenda item to get PAO opinion in the use of stormwater fees to pay for this. I would strongly suggest you also obtain an opinion from the State Auditor's Office as they are the ultimate decision authority on the use of funds. I will state once again that I am for the estuary project, always have been, and I've supported it. I've been to the meetings. However, the DESC, the Deschutes Estuary Steering Committee and Funding Work Group has not shown good leadership in working with the state on a funding solution. Assume that leadership position. You are the senior leaders, elected leaders in this DESC. Get your fellow elected leaders together to write a new ILA. This county and lot should in no way be paying into this fund. Tom Water should have greatly reduced cost share, and even Olympia's share should be greatly reduced. The burden should be that of the state. They created the problem and should pay for the future West Bay dredging. I will also state again that should any of you individually or collectively wish to have a taxpayer view on this, I am available, understand the issue, and can help identify a solution. Until now, I have not involved Lake Management District as part of this issue into this discussion, although I have been pressured to do so by many people in the Lake Management Districts. The link between the estuary project and the Lake Lawrence cannot be denied. I've talked to every one of you individually about this. The same river dumped metric tons of highly nutrient-rich sediment into both. Thirty years before the dam was built, Lake Lawrence became a reservoir mandated by the state. What financial assistance can Lake Lawrence expect from the county or state to mitigate the eutrophication of Lake Lawrence that was caused by that? The residents of Lake Lawrence have spent over $10 million over the past 38 years to provide stewardship of the lake. Now that you seem willing to help fund the dredging of West Bay, are you also going to be now willing to invest dollars in Lake Lawrence?
Time is up, Mr. Halverson.
Commissioner, Chair, thank you for your attention. I appreciate it. You all have a great day. Thank you.
This is not gonna work, just in general. Try it one more time. Okay, sorry about that. This is on, and then on deck is John Pettit.
Yeah, my name is Lisa Cezanne. I live in unincorporated Thurston County, Olympia, zip code. I'm actually here to encourage you to sign the ILA for sedimentation management of West Bay. That is part of the estuary restoration plan. I'm aware that many Thurston County residents who do not live near Bud Inlet question the rationale for their taxes paying for this activity, and I think the preceding speaker makes some very good arguments. But I still think that we need to assume responsibility for it. Because, you know, it does... I understand the rationale against it. It benefits primarily the Port of Olympia and recreational boat owners. I understand that sentiment. I have my own concerns about those two entities and their impacts. But let us remember that the Deschutes watershed, that is the river itself, along with the multitude of creeks and streams that flow into it, encompass a significant portion of Thurston County. Sediment deposited in the lake and eventually Bud Inlet originates in these further southern reaches. We occupy a large interconnected ecosystem, and we're all responsible for it. There are backdoors out of this ILA, and notably, and I'm quoting here, "If remediation of contaminated sediment in lower Bud Inlet is postponed indefinitely or cannot occur before the removal of the Fifth Avenue Dam," and that's on the port, and we really need to see that the port is being responsible. "If the private marinas fail to provide funding sufficient to meet their obligations under a formal dredging program under the no-action alternative, and if projected sediment management costs during the term of the ILA increases above agreed-upon allocation amounts." "After the initial dredging, when the dam is removed, now projected to happen in 2033, dredging is estimated to be needed every six years. That would mean approximately three times by the time the ILA expires in 2050." It's a worthwhile investment because it will demonstrate to the state Thurston County's commitment to such beneficial projects in the estuary restoration. This may enable the county to attract other grants. Above all, it will demonstrate Thurston County's recognition of the enormous benefits of restoring the health of the estuary and the benefits to people and wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. John Pettit, Kim Kelly on deck.
Monopoly takes a long time to play, Mr. Pettit. You only have four minutes.
But I know you always like my little examples. So yes, Monopoly. My name's John Pettit. I live on Rich Road. Monopoly is one of the things I'm gonna talk about because we've all talked about before the color of money. One of the colors of money, talking about the estuary project, is thought that maybe you would reach into stormwater funds that are all paid by the unincorporated area. Well, that's misusing the money for the purpose that is required for under law. I do understand that you're currently subjecting and getting some opinions about that. The opinions will be confirmed, and so that kinda needs to... It will diminish in itself once you receive the proper opinions. Although I do think that there are people out there who will take action if things aren't cleared up in a reasonable fashion. Referring to this particular item, I have to admit I was a little frustrated this morning. And I can be rather open about certain things, and I'm just gonna lay it on the line. Two years ago plus, I had three Commissioners here at the time. Two years ago plus, I had three commissioners here at the time. Mr. Edwards, Mr. Menzer, and Ms. Mejia. And one of the comments was about going forward with the bond issue in order to renovate and get the courthouse all done, is, "I've kicked the can down the road far enough. I'm going to vote for this." Wow. $5,000 a day for the last two years, and we still aren't anywhere with actually moving forward with the courthouse. Kicking the can down the road might have been a good idea because we certainly didn't have a plan, and lacking a plan means you're planning to fail. So I think that rather than getting overexcited and frustrated and angry with your co-commissioners, I think it's appropriate that you back down and you say, "Look, I accept the fact that we need to get the facts before we move forward." To that, I'll give Mr. Fornier a bonus point and say, "Yes, he wanted to get some facts in. Commissioner Edwards want to get facts in. Commissioner Klaus wants to get the facts in. Commissioner Menzer, he was so-so, but he, he went along with the program in general to say that we need to get the facts. It was clear we needed to get the facts." And so, my issue to you, though, is also another particular part. One of the things about the color of money is if you're talking about the particular Deschutes estuary, that is not just a legislative proclamation that we're moving forward with something. That constitutes a budgeting process. Millions and millions of dollars. If you don't know where you're getting it from, how can you possibly approve something? Which brings me back over to another topic, the legacy trees. The commissioners need to step up and say, "Look, we're not going to interfere with other departments' legal responsibilities to provide income to all these junior taxing districts. Stay in your own lane. We haven't done a very good job as, in the recent years, of dealing with our finances. The county's in desperate situation because we just want to do it. We feel good about it." This is business, people. Budgeting is part of the process. It's an administration act. It's not a, "I want a feel-good" act and have people salute me and think I'm great because I approve of different programs." With that, I've run out of time, and we'll just have to play Monopoly another time, but I'm going to leave the box here because I don't use it at home anymore. And I'll leave it over here with the clerk, and then you guys can maybe practice some budgeting skills and learn how to be able to use money more effectively. Thank you.
This is now public records.
Do not give us things, because now we got to keep it for seven years. They'll be requesting it in a year, and if we don't have it...
Kim Kelly followed by Johanna.
Hi, Chair Menzer and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Kim Kelly. I'm Chair of the Boston Harbor Association's Environment Committee, and I want to talk to you about two things today. First, ivy pulling season at Burfoot Park starts this Sunday. If anybody's interested in joining us from 10 to 12, it's actually a lot of fun. I bring this up because I want to thank the Director of Public Works, Jennifer Walker, and Ed Marson for supporting our efforts to remove, uh, remove ivy from the trees in Burfoot Park and also from the ground. And in these last three years, we've actually made some, some real progress. So I'm excited about that, and again, thank you so much for the support of the project. Second, I want to tell you the story about our proposal to expand Burfoot Park. We emailed this proposal to you last month, and, but I know you have a lot of things to read and you have a lot more important things to deal with, so I thought I'd just come to tell you about it to make sure it's on your radar screens. You have the proposal and the maps in your materials. I think you, you should. The one in particular that you might want to look at while I'm talking is this map, which shows the potential expansion area in red. So in February of 2023, the Boston Harbor Association invited Commissioner Mejia and staff to our annual meeting to tell us about a surplus property program we had heard was in development at the county. And that was to identify all the properties owned by the county and whether they were useful to the county or not, and if they weren't, to dispense of them either through sale or other means. So we were interested because the county owns 29 parcels or about 16 acres in Boston Harbor. Some are adjacent to Burfoot Park and were donated specifically to county parks. You can see that on, on the map, and I'm sorry, I didn't have enough maps for everybody here, but all the parcels in green are owned by the county, and then there are some that are outlined in blue, um, that, I can't remember why I outlined them in blue. Oh, because they're, they're owned by the county but not shaded as such on the county geodata maps. So at the meeting, we heard about the, the process that they proposed to go through, and we suggested that the process include a more robust public notice and comment step. In February of this year, we had a follow-up meeting with Commissioner Mejia and Jennifer Walker, Director of Public Works. We asked for a delay in the county's review of properties in Boston Harbor through the surplus property program until we could gather community input, and they agreed. We really appreciate that. So we went back to the neighborhood, and we talked with neighbors, held a community meeting, and concluded it made the most sense for the county to retain the approximately eight acres it owns adjacent to and immediately north of Burfoot Park to eventually expand the park. This would increase the acreage of Burfoot Park, one of the smallest in the county, and protect wetlands, wildlife habitat, and the creek that flows into Puget Sound. Considering how expensive and difficult it is to acquire land, it also made no sense to give up land that the county already owned. This eight acres is primarily, again, as I said, wetlands and a ravine, so it's not developable, at least from my amateur perspective. We developed a proposal, put it out to the community for comment, and also mailed it to the property owners in, within the expansion area and adjacent to it. Uh, I'm going to run out of time. We received 33 out of 35 comments, supported it, two were neutral. Was that the buzzer? No. Oh, sorry.
Can you just wrap up your thought there?
Yep. Anyway, I, I really appreciate you considering our proposal. For now, we are just asking that the county keep these properties for potential inclusion in the park and plan it through the park's open space and trails plan. We will be happy to help throughout this process, getting funding for additional property, et cetera. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you for the map. And are the blue splotches, is that like wetland area, or what do the blue splotches represent?
The blue splotches are wetland. According to the map.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Johanna, followed by Mark Fleming.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. First off, my property taxes and the receipt, they're paid. So today, I'm here to talk to you about openness and transparency. I sent you my comments by email earlier today. The reason they were all in caps in the email I sent you is it's easier for me to read it here now. So I wasn't yelling. First, I'd like to comment on the ongoing saga of Commissioner Klaus. Have you released the investigator findings? If not, why not? What part of this is transparency? On September, September 4th or thereabout, Chair Menzer raised a scenario from the past that he indicated was not addressed in the same manner as the current situation. I would ask if the allegations that one of you took a $10,000 campaign contribution was investigated. If true, this would constitute not just a poor judgment situation, but a criminal one. Why is it that I can watch two commissioners signal each other, proceed to type frantically on their cellphones? It seems that some of you carry two, and then, when asked for those records, they suddenly don't exist. Intentionally deleting a public record in Washington is a crime and is the opposite of transparency. Earlier this year, I made a complaint about illegal dumping of crushed asphalt on property adjacent to my family's farm. I requested any records the county has related to my complaint, and again, the county responded to the PRR with no responsive records. The county manager, assistant manager, and many other staff had previously indicated to me that it was being investigated. How can there be no responsive records if it is being investigated? What part of this is transparency? Finally, on September 5th, I received a response to that PRR that I was unable to access. After inquiring, it seems that the system does not work on a cellphone. How many of us use cellphones as our computer? That's a fix that needs to happen. I responded on, uh, um, I responded on September 6th requesting access to the county computer to view the requested documents in subsequent response. I tried to request informally the information, and the response from staff was that they do not normally update complaints, complaint tents. When I asked for the update, and that I was concerned about the situation, is the science is basically two extremes of nothing to worry about or from a different agency that within moments or minutes of crushed asphalt being introduced to waters that salmon are in, they die within minutes. It is quite concerning to myself as the piles of asphalt are leaching into the groundwater and standing water on the site. What part of this is transparency? Today, I called, and I'm deleting the name from my comment today. Today, I called a staff person whose signature block was on the email response to my PRR that I finally received a response to. The extension to civil unit at the prosecutor's office did not answer the phone despite numerous attempts. And I will say that that's the second time in two weeks that I've tried to call the county, and nobody answers the phone. When I explained to the, or I chose a different, um, extension after trying that extension many times, and the person that he answers was going to transfer me to, back to the extension for the civil unit. But when I explained, they said they would, teams messaged the person to be sure she was at her desk and available when the person came back online, and said, "Yes, she is," and transferred me to her direct line. I was met with a voicemail. Geez surprise, more transparency from the county government. You are responsible, along with the county manager, for your staff. I understand you can't keep your shit straight, but the public deserves more from all of you and your staff. Remember, you serve at the pleasure of "We, the People, Do Better."
Mark Fleming, followed by Bob Ziegler.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Fleming, and I live in Olympia. I'm speaking today as a member of the Olympia Coalition to abolish nuclear weapons. I and fellow coalition members are here today to ask the Board of Commissioners to enact a resolution to calling on the United States to ratify and participate in the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. This treaty was ratified by, so far, by 73 nations and has been in effect since 2020, January of 2021, and comprehensively prohibits all activities related to the development, possession, and use of nuclear weapons. We made a similar request to the, uh, to the Board in April, but we received no response, so we're coming back again. And if for no other reason, the crisis has gotten even worse. We now have the Russians lowering the threshold for using nuclear weapons, so the situation has become more dire. So we're asking the Board to do this because nuclear weapons are as much a local issue as they are an international and national issue. And the reason that is, nuclear weapons can affect local government ability to protect public health, safety, and welfare. A nuclear attack causes mass casualties and destroys the local capability and personnel to respond to those capabilities. And that's, we're in a target-rich environment, so we could be, certainly be subject to that. But even if the weapons are used elsewhere, they can cause impacts well away, well beyond the actual theater of conflict. So these impacts make local governments an important stakeholder in the debate about nuclear weapons. And for that reason, almost 800 local governments in the United States and around the world have enacted support of the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. And that includes Olympia and Walla Walla in Washington. And what this is, is local governments, uh, local input is necessary to overcome the inertia that allows nine nuclear-armed nations to threaten the rest of the world with nuclear war. So today, we're asking Thurston County to join these many local governments in endorsing the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. And to that end, we have provided some draft, uh, draft language for a resolution, as well as a copy of a flyer that describes our activities. So we would be happy to answer any questions along the way if you have them. Thank you for considering our request, and we look forward to hearing your response. So thank you.
Bob Ziegler with Joanne Dufour on deck.
Thank you, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Bob Ziegler. I live in Olympia, and I've lived here for approximately 43 years. There was one, we were here in April 2nd to take and, and talk to you about this issue of nuclear weapons. And I'll bring this up because with us last time, there's Glenn Anderson. There was, made one of his last public appearances. He died in, in July. We're going to have a memorial for him on this Friday at United Churches at 6:15, and there was, be a, at a vigil at 5 o'clock at Percival Landing. There was, but Glenn had been, been fighting nuclear weapons for 45 years here in Thurston County and real active in the, in the weapons freeze, nuclear weapons freeze campaign, and also in, in, in other efforts, and testified here last time we're here. And we'd like to have some input on where we go from here, from you, there was, with a proposed resolution. And if you have any questions or things that we can provide, there was, um, it's, it, as Mark had pointed out, the thresholds are being lowered for use of nuclear weapons all over, all over the world. And the fact that the United States is doing that, too. We've lowered our thresholds, which we can use first-strike nuclear weapons. Now, this is, this and other things have brought the attention of the international community. And last Friday, the Nobel Peace Prize was given to Hibakusha, the group that survived the attack on Hiroshima and Nagasaki, that have been speaking out and were successful at, at getting, there was use of nuclear weapons as a taboo, but that taboo is being challenged today. And the committee said, the Norwegian Nobel Committee said, "It is alarming that today this taboo against use of nuclear weapons is under pressure. The nuclear powers are modernizing and upgrading their arsenals. New countries appear to be preparing to acquire nuclear weapons, and threats are being made to use nuclear weapons in ongoing warfare. At this moment in history, it is worth reminding ourselves what nuclear weapons are, the most destructive weapons the world has ever seen." There is, in 2021, the county passed a resolution on, on, there was declaring a climate emergency. This is one of the existential threats facing the whole world, including Thurston County. There is, and that's why there was, we ask you to also take a stand on what the bolt of atomic scientists with the doomsday clock have pointed out is another existential, existential threat to survivalist planet, and that is nuclear weapons. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Dufour with Maggie Reardon on, on deck.
Thank you very much, esteemed Chair and Commissioners. My name is Joanne Dufour. I'm a very happy resident of Thurston County, and I live in Lacey. And I'm here to support my colleagues and the position that they have presented. I don't know if you realize that a lot of times people have said, "Oh, well, you know, it doesn't affect us." Well, we happen to be living near the third-largest arsenal in the world at Bangor Naval Base. We are a target. And if that target was, was targeted, we'd feel it more than we'd want to because it's that close to us. So the threat is very real, and to threaten the use of nuclear weapons, which we've heard, we've heard if we're listening to the news, that's a war crime. I'm a trainer for International Red Cross, and I train about international humanitarian law. It's a war crime to be able to threaten the use. The International Committee of the Red Cross has already come out opposing nuclear weapons, and it totally supports this treaty. And matter of fact, the, um, the Hibakusha were very, 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 Hibakusha are the names of the people who were in Hiroshima and Nagasaki and lived. They saw horrible experiences, but they did manage to live, and lifelong were advocating the elimination of nuclear weapons. And the Nobel Prize has, is the second time, and I included in, if you... And the Nobel Prize has, is the second time, and I included in, if you've gotten a packet of the handouts, I included this to tell you when the treaty itself won the Nobel Prize. And so this is some background information for you. Now the treaty, just to help you understand in the packet, you'll see who actually has. Now, none of the nine countries that have the weapons want to do anything with their just rare find of nuclear weapons. The rest of the world is saying, do something, please, because you expose your bombs and we feel it. We're gonna get impacted. And that's the same thing with us. Okay, even though our government has chosen to, and if you look at the second page where it shows expenditures, we managed to spend $51 billion a year on our nuclear weapons alone. Just think, you know, what we're asking you to do doesn't cost anything whatsoever, just to be able to pass a resolution. But can't you think of all the money that, that weapon money could be used instead? Just think of all the options that are there instead of creating weapons that destroy the world. Why do we want to do that? So the other piece that, that I have, Mark referenced that there are a variety of conditions that go along with the passage. And so you'll get a piece like this in the handout that tells you exactly the provisions. The, the woman who wrote this, she was the ambassador from Costa Rica. The woman who wrote that actually said that she looked at the treaty where the treaty worked. It was a treaty to eliminate chemical weapons. And she said, well, if that worked, and I'm supposed to write a treaty about nuclear weapons, I'll take down all those verbs and make sure we're doing the same things, that we're going to make sure that the country, the companies, the countries that have the weapons go through step by step, eliminating any, any arsenals that they have. And so what we're hoping is that our leaders will reach out to the other eight countries and agree worldwide that this is no, no good future for any of us. So we thank you for your consideration and hope that this time you might be willing to be the first, well, there are about over 740 countries, cities worldwide. There are 73 cities here in the states, but only about four or five counties. So you would take definite leadership in this state, being the first county to do it, but you're among the leaders in the, in the, in the country that, that as a county level would be taking the steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maggie Reardon. And then I'll call for anyone else that didn't get a chance to sign up.
Hi, I wanted to talk about paving, flooding and how Mother Nature bats last. I don't know what to say about a species that paves and cements over life giving land, either agricultural or forest land. And that we could, yeah, we're a species that kills our own food sources, which is ludicrous. But as far as, also there was a proclamation thanking the Emergencies Department for their flood initiatives and preparedness. And one of the, the best flood prevention plan is stop cutting trees.
Thank you. Anyone else who didn't get a chance, Mr. West? Go ahead.
I own property on Berry Street Northwest, Sunset Beach Northeast and outside of the county on 2179 Wau Lane on the Big Island and Sprague Street in Union. I'd like to come and talk to you about two things today. First, I'd like to second the comments of Mr. Halverson, and I'd like to thank the Commission for taking some extra time to look at this interlocal cooperation agreement. You know, democracy works when citizens can communicate with their government and the government doesn't have to do what the citizens suggest, but I appreciate that you're at least listening and taking some time to make a careful decision on, on this very important thing. And I'd point out that I, interlocal cooperation agreements are not commonly used to implement half a billion to billion dollar, 30 year long projects. In fact, I am unable to find another case ever when a FDIS was administered through a interlocal cooperation agreement. So this is a very novel step and I don't think that's, that's been fully appreciated. So I hope you look at it very carefully. And again, my main concerns are that the toxic waste that the port, that's at the port is properly dealt with before the dam's breached and that the Steering Committee Act in a public, open a public meeting and hold public meetings. So those are my main concerns. I'd also point out that as part of our democratic society, we have in Washington, we have very powerful sunshine laws that require in most cases, public meetings and compliance with the Public Records Act. And this in many cases can avoid serious mistakes by government, or in some cases, it can create serious and costly mistakes. Four years ago, almost, almost exactly four years ago, Michael Reinall was shot by a interjurisdictional task force. In hindsight, this is probably a justified shooting. He had a gun, he killed someone before, but at that time, there was a lot of uncertainty as to the investigation, which Thurston County conducted. And I saw, tried to seek records about that from four different agencies. Pierce County gave up everything. Lakewood didn't produce anything. Department of Corrections didn't produce anything and Thurston County didn't produce anything. All three of those cases I won. I won the Lakewood case on appeal. I won the Department of Corrections in the trial court. I won the Thurston County case on appeal, I think a couple of years ago. And today's handout provides the latest in this. And you're looking at me like you haven't heard about this. There's a reason why you haven't heard about this because my attorney's settlement offer was apparently not conveyed to you. And so I'm here today to point out that my attorney, Joan Mel, contacted your attorney, Ms. Conrigan, some time ago with a settlement offer and under the RPC, they're required to convey that to the governing board. I'm not sure if they did, but no one responded to Ms. Mel. She said she has, has no further communication with this lady. So I'd just like to, to make sure that you are appraised of that and you review the, the handout today. And I would point out that Thurston County completely failed to make a reasonable search. It, it didn't even, it admitted that. It just said there weren't any records and it also produced affidavits from its star witness, Sergeant Brady, saying there were no records, responsive records when Mr. Brady was the one who was providing the records that were illegally withheld. And also when the New York Times asked for information for Mr. Brady, he provided it to them, but when a citizen asked for, for that information, they didn't get anything. So that's the thing. So I'd ask them, you to make sure that you've reviewed the offer that Joan Mel provided you counsel. Thank you much, very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the boardroom that didn't have a chance to sign up? Then I see Mr. Nightingale's hand and I'll go down the line with the folks on Zoom. I see Ms. Comstock as well. Go ahead, Mr. Nightingale. You have four minutes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with Commissioners today. Just a background, I live in unincorporated Thurston County and I'm, I'm retired, but still involved with local community and various committees regarding Thurston County operations, solid waste, like management. And prior to that, I have a long career working in environmental field. And primarily what I want to suggest to the Commission is you support Barry Halverson. I've read his materials and I find them very persuasive. And it seems to me that there's just simply a mismatch between the level of commitment being suggested by the interlocal agreement and the connection to Thurston County as a whole, as an entity. It seems like there's other people that should be stepping forward to fill the financial needs in that area and that the level of commitment asked for by Thurston County is disproportionate to that. So just as, you know, a longtime public servant and also somebody who's fiscally conservative, I think it, it would be a mistake to vote in favor of that interlocal agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Comstock.
Good afternoon. My name is Linnea Comstock and I live in the city of Olympia. I am starting my comment by stating that roughly 50% of state timberland has been off limits for logging since 1997 due to the impacts of the Endangered Species Act with the Board of Natural Resources following up with the policy of setting aside those lands, otherwise known as the Habitat Conservation Plan, to my understanding. Of the remaining lands, DNR follows very scientific criteria regarding when and how they log. I'm confident they do so in the most environmentally responsible way possible. DNR does not allow flashing and burning or clear cutting, clear cutting of forests. Please keep that in fact in mind as you ponder your future actions. I have been following this Thurston County budget process for 2425. I would encourage you as the board to change your position of calling for halting many capital forest timber sales and to drop the lawsuit against the Board of Natural Resources as well. If you promote timber sales, you will retain the revenue slated for the County General Fund and counting roads. If you continue to advocate for halting timber sales, you will have a revenue loss for county roads of at least $1,653,000, according to DNR estimates in the spreadsheet that's been sent by DNR to multiple junior beneficiaries. The junior taxing districts, as noted before, are also impacted. West Thurston Regional Fire District received $77,500 in 2023 from timber sales, according to Shannon Heminger, Administrative Services Director for West Thurston Regional Fire Authority. According to DNR estimates, if projected timber sales do not go through, you, the, the West Thurston Regional Fire Authority will lose $439,000. These funds are used for keeping the lights on, buildings operating and fleet operations. A fire truck transmission recently had to be replaced at a cost of $45,000. They use those timber sales funds for those issues and I would encourage you to think about that as you ponder your future actions. Separately, five other counties have worked with DNR to try to preserve mature forests, but also work to make junior taxing districts whole. In a letter sent to the Thurston County Board of Commissioners dated September 25th, 2024, Lance Commissioner Franz noted how DNR had attempted to meet with you many times and had met with your staff many times. Quote, "I sent a similar invitation to other timber counties, including King, Snohomish, Watcom, Jefferson and Clougham. To date, my DNR team has held numerous conversations with these counties, which have resulted in improved relationships, closer collaboration and coordination, and even concrete strategies and plans for forest management and conservation that continues to support their communities' junior taxing districts, the local economy and strong environmental stewardship and climate benefits." I would like to enter into the record of her letter to be able to document extensively her, her statement. And what I did today was, since I'm not in person, I have emailed that to the, the board, the clerk for the board. The Board of County Commissioners, unlike other counties, apparently chose to address this issue in August, even though the letter was dated March 5th. As she states at the end of her letter, "In conclusion, I want to reiterate DNR's willingness to work with the Board of County Commissioners, the junior taxing districts and the community to meet the clear objectives of the Board of Natural Resources laid out in its March 5th, 2024 letter. Through our work with other counties and beneficiaries, we have shown that by working together, including all of those affected, we can achieve better results for our environment, our communities and our local economies. I encourage you to work with the Board of Natural Resources and Department of Natural Resources, as the other counties have done, and include the junior taxing districts in your plans as well as support timber sales going forward." Thank you.
Chris Lester. Did you wish to provide public comment today? Okay, so that concludes public comment for today. Thanks everybody for providing input. We're gonna move to the county managers update.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Nothing to report today.
Okay, we have a consent agenda of 3A through 3H. Any requests from the Commissioners to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Actually, it's 3A through 3G now because we removed item 3A.
Okay, I thought that was already done. I must have pulled the wrong draft, so.
And we added three more, can we? One, two, three, four.
L.
Three L. Three L.
3A through L. So that reflects both sets of changes.
Yeah. I move to approve the consent calendar consisting of items 3A through 3L.
One second.
And just. Motion in second to approve items 3A through 3L. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna have a discussion.
There's no discussion on the consent agenda.
Is 3A the?
I, I was gonna clarify, 3A is now what was 3B.
Yeah, we, we already went through that and removed.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
This agenda's been amended.
Yeah. We amended the agenda, so.
I was so pointing in yellow, so this is really no longer an accurate reflection of what we're approving.
This is my 3A is why I'm asking.
Yeah, same with me. I got confused, but now I understand. So this is the original agenda with the yellow or with the proposed amendments that were all approved.
Thank you.
So with, with the, with the amended consent agenda of 3A through 3L, we have a motion and a second, and I'm calling for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that brings us to department items, which starts with, it's gonna be confusing because we've moved 4A and 4B. We still have 4C, the original 4C, which I'll call 4A, which is Public Health and Social Services, WSDA grant number K5572 for Emergency Food Response Network. Alicia Hughes, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon Commissioners. Alicia Hughes, Population Health at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. I'm here to ask for approval on the Washington State Department of Agriculture, contract number K5572, interagency agreement for $93,817.87. Thurston County Public Health and Social Services received direct outreach from WSDA on this grant opportunity to facilitate county-directed procurement and distribution of emergency food to hunger relief organizations. And this is part of an alternative to the federal USDA Farmers to Food Box Program. The grant aims to reach organizations that serve BIPOC and other traditionally underserved communities. And the statement of work runs through June 30th of 2025. And happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Alicia? New program we have and kind of interesting, exciting. All ready for motion?
I move to approve WASDA contract number K5572, interagency agreement between Washington State Department of Agriculture in the amount of $93,817.87 through June 30th, 2025, to facilitate procurement and distribution of emergency food to hunger relief organizations, including organizations, and authorize the interim director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Motion in second to approve this agreement. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That is the end of the business agenda. As I understand it, here from the amendment, we've already approved items 5A, B and C as consent. And so this will bring us to Commissioner item, Commissioner reports. We do have a public hearing at 3:30 regarding the six-year transportation improvement program. That's at 3:30, but I'll start with Commissioner Mihia.
Thank you. So I attended the event at Squawson Park held by the city of Olympia to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, along with Commissioner Mensah. And it was a really well-attended event and really such a celebration of community. Attended the virtual Latino Economic Town Hall hosted by the White House. I also attended the GEL Resource Team Meeting, attended the open house for the Barre Holdings Proposal, and it was very well-attended. I want to give community planning and economic development staff just a big shout out. They did such a great job in hosting that event. Again, it was, it was a room packed full of people and they managed it very well and were providing very concise information. Attended the Lotus Court Grand Opening, attended the Policy Subcommittee. Attended the Lotus Court Grand Opening, attended the Policy Subcommittee Meeting for the Board of Health, attended the Ag Forum tours, along with Commissioner Fournier, Mensah, and Edwards. Attended the Together 35th Breakfast, TRPC Week Without Driving Bus Tour, attended Intercity Transit Meeting as well, and also attended a, I already said that. I would like to invite the community to attend the Bukota Casket Race this weekend. Commissioner Mensah, Commissioner Fournier, and myself are going to be competing in the casket race this Saturday. And so last year, we won a couple of awards, and now we know the rules a little bit better, so we're hoping to.
So we know how to cheat better.
And, yeah, we'll be competing against our own public works team, so it's going to be an exciting time.
Mr. Fournier?
Last night, I attended the JASCOM meeting. We talked about that briefly at a recent check-in, so I don't want to get into that further. I think there's some more discussions that we'll have to have, but they need to be, I think, organized and orchestrated to have those discussions. Attended the Transportation Policy Board meeting, where they were talking about several funding proposals that will be on, that will have recommendations for TRPC for some large transportation projects throughout the region. Attended Board of Health meeting, TRPC on behalf of Commissioner Mejia, and then had a great time going on the Ag Committee farm tours last week.
Mr. Edwards?
I think I'm going to limit mine to, most of my time has been used up on the county budget. For those of you that don't know what the county budget consists of, you're lucky. I'm a lot of go at that. And then constituent issues of the estuary, code compliance, building permits, land use, so that's been the bulk of my activities, along with attending some of these other functions that the other county commissioners are mentioning. Thank you.
Mr. Claus?
So I did not attend the Ag Tour, but I did receive a copy of the tour book, like this folder with all the farms and the stories and the schedule, and with a note from Marcy, like, saying, hey, you know, like, our meeting before this Ag Tour helped kind of shape the way it was structured. And I just wanted to kind of give a shout out because that was really nice to kind of go above and beyond to, like, I really wanted to go to the Ag Tour, and I was upset that I had to miss it, but it was really nice to kind of see that afterwards. So I'm hoping to kind of connect more with some of the community members who participated in that tour. I also had a one-on-one meeting with the sheriff. We talked about mostly issues, the ongoing issues related to pursuits. I also met with the Superior Court Presiding Judge Skinder. And then last night, Mr. Fournier, did you mention the JASCOM in your update?
Yes.
Okay. I attended JASCOM as well as Commissioner Fournier, and I thought it was a really informative meeting. They talked about, there was like a shelter pets presentation and also a presentation on their outreach efforts, which I thought was really cool. They actually, like, have this whole thing going on where they're, like, creating advertisements with, like, dogs on them, and they have QR codes. I have one right here. It's like a bookmark. And they have all kinds of little, like, bookmarks and things that they leave around town in places like coffee shops and other places. And I actually spotted one and sent a picture to the Director of Animal Services, because I was, like, excited to see them around. So kudos to their outreach team for all of their hard work. And we also discussed the reserve fund policies as well, so it was a pretty good meeting. Constituent meetings I've had over the last couple of weeks have been mostly related to public safety and the ILA for the estuary. And then I also attended a meeting today with budget staff, which was good because, you know, being my first budget cycle, it was nice to kind of have that connection with county manager, assistant county manager, and budget staff to just kind of receive updated info per our discussion yesterday and our feedback and our questions. So just continuing to work with the budget team through the budget process. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Super busy couple of weeks. Farm tour with most of my colleagues, the Together Breakfast, attended an Evergreen Foundation event, kind of celebrating their conclusion of their fundraising campaign. The Innovative Justice Committee meeting that I regularly attend was celebrating the resource hub and some of the successes from our resource fair that we recently had, the biggest to ever occur in Thurston County. That has translated directly into increased foot traffic and service points for the hub, so that event was successful on multiple fronts. If you haven't seen the EV charger at Pioneer Park that's solar-powered and freestanding, I would encourage you to do that. That's in South Tumwater. Super cool. I've never seen one like it, but it looks like something that we'll probably be seeing a lot more of in the future. We have one that was grant-funded right here in Thurston County. Marilyn Strickland, our Congresswoman for Congressional District 10, held a local leaders' roundtable. I was able to represent the county there and get some insights into some of her priorities for next year and here, challenges being faced. She was interested in public safety and what things would look like on the ground in her district, so I heard reports from all the different cities, and there was a Pierce County representative as well, so that was interesting. Had meetings with members of the Board of Natural Resources, two of them, to try to describe a little bit more of what Thurston County's goals are with respect to mature forests in capital state forests. Did my annual daffodil planting with the McLean students, one of my favorite District Three events, over near the Ralph Monroe Trail on the Evergreen Parkway. We plant daffodils, and in the spring, you'll see them spring up, and the kids have a really good time doing that. Sensing Guideline Commission met, and we spent the whole time talking about solutions to the juvenile overcrowding issue that we're seeing at Green Hill in Lewis County, and what kinds of policies we could recommend that might alleviate that issue over the long term. Attended the 100th anniversary of the Capitol Theater last night. That was really fun with a bunch of bands that I like, so I might have been there even if I wasn't a commissioner. It was one of my, a really fun event. And then Indigenous Peoples' Day with Commissioner Mejia, where we did some kind of a frog dance, and that was pretty cool. And got to see tribal members talk about the meaning of that to them, and didn't get to stay for food, but it looked like there was a huge community turnout, and they were going to have lunch and do different things after we had to say our goodbyes. And then I tried to attend the Fire District Open House for my local Fire District, which is McLean Black Lake. Apparently, I got the wrong date on my calendar, so nobody was there, but it was the week before. But I know they had a great event, because I saw stuff online about it, and it looked like super good, open house, meet the fire dog, get a tour of the fire hall. I'll make sure I try to get there next year. So with that, 318, we have a public hearing in 12 minutes. If there's nothing else for good of the order.